So there's actually two parcels associated with this property. It totals below 21 acres. There's a small parcel that includes the entrance playoff of Jamestown Parkway. It used to be under the old Evergreen site. So that's about a third of an acre. And then the large parcel is the 21 acre parcel. There is one building still left on the site. You've got the, what we call the lifespan facility. The Evergreens facility was torn down back around 2015. They're about. The facility in lifespan is approximately 45 years old. It was built sometime around 1980. The property right now is owned for public and institutional use, PI use. And it has utilities to it. We've got water and sewer and do the energy supplies to the site. So that's just some very basic data about the site. Next slide, you can see the site laid out against the surrounding properties. It's a long narrow slice that runs adjacent to Highway 74 now. The frontage off of Jamestown Parkway. There's a stream, if you look at the picture on the right side, it's difficult to see up here, but the second little box down shows a stream that runs down. It kind of cuts the property in half. Next slide. This just shows the GIS map of the small parcel. Could have mentioned the little third acre tract there on the left. And the next slide will show you the GIS of the larger parcel there. Good question. GIS is a geographic information system. That's the tax record that you get on one. Take me up on my challenge. If I say something you don't understand, ask me the question, I'll be glad to clarify. Thank you for asking. Next slide, looking at the valuation of the property. Looking at tax pay, the small parcel's paying right now $66,000. The larger parcel's land pay is $1.6, the building's $1.2. So the total tax pay is about $2.8 billion for the entire parcel. We had it appraised in 2024 against comparable properties in the area. The appraisal had come back at $1.3 million roughly. Next slide will show you some of the access to get to the site. If you try to get to the lifespan facility, you have to come in off of Jamestown Parkway and get on Beaumont, one of many ways you can get through the neighborhoods there. But you end up on Beaumont. Beaumont runs into the property at the gate. The old Evergreen site has an entrance that's grown up now off of Jamestown Parkway. You can get to that side of the property that way. If you see at the lower right side of that picture, you can see a curve. The map actually shows Beaumont Parkway curving back north. There is still a paved road through the woods there. It's in poor shape, but I think originally that property, highway, street looped the property from that side and went back out. All right, next slide. This is the entrance. If you're standing at the lifespan gate with your back down Beaumont, it shows the residential nature of the site. I put this slide in here just to show you that to access the lifespan property, you do have to go through the residential area there. Next slide. If you're going to develop this property, one of the things you're going to ask is, is there any flooding issues? The flood map shows a very small area on the very southernmost corner of the property that's actually in the hundred year flood map, but the vast majority of the property is outside of the floods. So that's difficult to see on this map, but the point of this is there's only a very small portion of this property being impacted by any flood issue. Next slide. Topography is another thing. If you're going to develop property, you want to know how does it slope? How does it fall? How does it lay? Generally, this property is flat. It does slope from the top side north to the bottom side. It's fairly gentle slope. There are no severe ravines or rapid elevation changes that would make it a challenge to develop, but there is topography there. It falls about 50 or 60 feet as you go across the property. The next slide is about the building itself, the lifespan building. It's generally an open warehouse with surrounding offices on one side. So the large open area was a manufacturing facility, I think, for specialties, individuals from the lifespan facility ran. There's a random offices on the right side. There are a couple of restroom groups in the building and then a couple of small showers in the offices on the upper piece of the floor plan there. The text on this is very hard to make large enough to see in this large of an arena, but that's kind of the way the building lays out. There is a small addition of open space on the left, that little box on the left side of the large warehouse that is warehouse type space. The ceiling height's not, I don't think it's quite as high as the main bay. The main bay is about 12 feet clear ceiling height. So there's a lot of nuances to the property, but in general, the property's in good shape. It's watertight. We don't have issues with intrusion, roof leaks, that kind of thing. It does show its age. Obviously, it's 45 years old, but it's in firm shape. I've got some pictures. If you want to go to the next slide of the interior, if you've never been to the facility. This shows kind of the general condition. Again, it's hard to see at this distance on this screen, the details, but it just gives you a feel for the space. It's generally vinyl tile, suspended ceiling, brick walls, relatively plain finish on the interior. The restrooms do need some uplift. They show their age more than anything else in the building. The next pictures. That gives you an idea of the small shower area that I mentioned in one of the office areas. There's a toilet and shower in there. I probably like a little comment on here, just trying to give you a basic of what the building looks like and ever seen on the inside. Next picture are the exterior photos. Circular entrance way, I didn't really capture that in the photos. Then you've got the covered walkway into the building you can see there. I shot, I gave you some pictures, I shot around the building just to give you a feel for it. There is a loading dock, three bay loading dock you can back up and that backs into the large warehouse area. The grounds, the asphalt of Parkmont, again, it shows its age, but it's well kept. And I believe that's all I have about the building itself. If you have any questions about the site, building, anything that I said, please ask. I'll be glad to try to answer it for you. It's about 22,000 square feet. The building's about 22,000 square. Depending on what you want to use the building for, which I have, your outfit cost, if you try to finish it out in the warehouse space, that'll be one number. If you just try to keep it general in the way it is and just wanted to facelift it and get it modernized. Generally, in today's market, it's going to cost you $100 a square foot to do a facelift on something. If you get into plumbing issues, that number goes up fast. And if you start building walls, of course, that number goes up.
Okay, so is the city and the county on parting in this, the funding business endeavor?
That's a question beyond my pay grade. That's what these fine folks up here are doing.
No, give you a mic.
I need to read.
We have not been signed yet. And this is a visiting session. We have not talked with the city of High Point and different counties as far as what we plan on, but I would hope that we should do something with the city and the county working together on it. That's why we're here today.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, that the county has already secured 5.58 billion for this endeavor if it goes through?
You're wrong.
I'm wrong? I just want to clarify what I'm thinking.
Thank you. It was my understanding that this will be a new structure, not a remodel structure from the drawing. Is that, am I correct or wrong?
Which, which structure are you referring to?
The new facility would be a new endeavor. You're looking at 21 acres, but you're just remodeling one building, $20,000 square feet. Am I wrong in that?
You're wrong because nothing has been decided yet.
Oh, that is wonderful. Right, well, what are the intentions?
We don't have intentions. We're listening to your community.
Okay.
All right.
Good evening. Abby.
Somebody put the phone center station out.
What does Abby mean? We're listening to the community to see what you want. We're not addressing the open door ministries proposal. We, the county has received three or four proposals. Open door is just one proposal that we have received. We have not made any commitments or any decisions about that site.
Okay. He talked as if it was going to be a rehab of a facility. And I take drawing to a new facility that looks nothing like what he is proposing to rehab.
But that's open doorish proposal.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Austin.
And we're not proposing to rehab anything again, like Ms. Austin said. We're here to listen. And if you all come up with some good ideas, then we can start talking to our staff about that. That's what we're here to like to do. Get your ideas. It might be 100 ideas, give it about narrowed down to 10 or 20 or 5, and then we start looking at it from that perspective, getting the community buying. This is what this is for.
I just want to make sure that I'm saying that nothing is decided, but if you talk to y'all.
Nothing is decided.
And we'll do something with it at this point as more than right now.
Exactly.
Zero.
That was going to be my question. The county has owned it. The building has been torn down for a few years. I hear you saying that there were some proposals that came across the board. What was the county's consideration before this listening session? What's the county? And, and I acknowledge that the newspaper and the locals have put information out there that may not necessarily back it up. You tell me your starting point. Where, I mean, it's been sitting there and now it's like, tell me what you want to do? It's been a few years. What are you considering? Start me out with what your considerations are before the last one you see in the news.
The county has no specific plans for the use of that property at the moment. That's why we're looking at proposals. And, and we didn't just start getting proposals this year. We have gotten proposals prior to this year and we have tried to make that property available to other groups that were interested, but they couldn't work it out on their side. So we're starting tonight at ground zero with about three or four proposals that we have in hand now. But those proposals have not been acted on by any form or fashion. We are waiting to see what the community wants to see there.
As the state said before, county's, what has the proposal stated, suppose they have to go, they're going to move out of High Point, they're talking about this building is pointing to house 125 to 200 meter. And then during the day, all the way back out on their neighborhood, that's why that's just people on you.
That proposal, that article was not generated by Guilford County and we own the property.
They quote Guilford County.
They didn't quote us as saying that was going there. They may have quoted us as saying we had a proposal for that.
Let me say this, I don't know what, I might be in favor of, okay, I can tell you what I'm not in favor of, and that's homelessness. I may not say it to his head at all. I visited the site, okay? And I saw that it was so close to a neighborhood, okay? A once small little fence, your house, there's, I tried to back up. And I said at that point, I am not in favor of putting a homelessness. But just by I am in favor of doing something for the homeless, that is not the case. That's all we, y'all hate with the homeless.
We want to know. We live in this area.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just one vote. I'm just one vote. That's it for me, Austin. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. Let me make that clear, okay?
I think if you don't have the mic, you shouldn't be able to speak.
I don't know what's going to come out of this meeting. I'm just telling what you're all saying. I'm not in favor of homelessness. And, and this, I would like. The apple. No! Number one. I got two.
We can't hear you.
Drew, Sheriff Ben Edrode at the corner, and rest Mr. Rachel Gee, Sam Feller, selling drugs. I was talking to him right now.
We can't hear him.
Sam, over no business, he would be a father in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Sneak out of Twitter stuff, ain't bothering me that much.
Yes, you do.
We don't, everybody, Sam, I was there. That goes to this, I run from them, I know who's talking. They can run down back the Seadrill behind Dr. Tewin in that church there. They can wallow in that neighborhood, that lane going down with them Seadrill. They will not let them who in there. I was alien Memphis out of they land in Templemore, we going to work out our returns being ready and our children being a little, they did a jump. I'm telling, they smoke crack and on board and shit. And the president knew I'm not lying. They don't think I focused up on him. He told me to get out of line. He was about Austin, still not much, brother Austin. Let somebody else get that later. Well, then, camp the county on that, settle or get the newly built, one more thing. After the city got involved, now I see the big picture. They trying to work with y'all and y'all trying to get that money for a reason. I always said to my family, y'all, they going to go to hell, what they throwing to shit to? I always, let me say this, Austin, is that we want to listen to everybody. We want to hear some of the ideas. I think we are, we see housing in the building in the air.
I think we all are in agreement and to our leaders, it is very clear to everyone here does not want to open ministries in our neighborhood. That is clear. So I think what our position is, take it completely out of the table. That just, that should not even be considered. What I propose is that, my question is, have we reached out to private industry to potentially buy that property? We need something that's going to make this community grow. We do private industry with kabbiyahs that's going to protect the community, that's going to create jobs for young people, that's going to have developmental programs. What, do we have need private sector organizations that are trying to come into this neighborhood and help it grow? I understand High Point University and Cavan does not want that over there anymore. That's clear. That's the reason why it's being moved. I want High Point University, love it. But we should not be subject to that in our neighborhoods of not, of having buildings and things established that's not going to help us grow. I mean, look at what they did right off of Seadrill. They pretty much cut through our neighborhood. That wouldn't happen in any other neighborhood that are in that area. They're not going to have anything on, out for Deep River. Why can't we have a decent grocery store? Why can't we have a business?
If anybody, if anybody brought the city to say crazy, my name is Andrew Boe and I thank all of you who gather here this area. As Mr. Austin said, that he have, he get one vote, I'm going to ask the community, if you're deciding to stop further, to change, to make any decision that it's not going to be used for anything in regards to open door, we better, our church and the community, we be informed of how it all works.
I don't think he had a question. I think it was a wrong statement.
If you make any further decision that was your decision on your own, or if you go to the community and the community decide to change it to our ministry or whatnot, will we be informed, will the community be informed?
I see what he's saying.
Yes, we are not going to make any decisions without them coming to community.
Thank you.
So the city, the county is not going to come and say, this is what we're going to do, okay? Regardless of what you want to, if you want to see there, this is what we're going to do. That's not going to happen. If that was going to happen, we would already done it and we wouldn't have this meeting. So we want to hear you all, you know, some real concrete ideas.
Yes.
On how that idea be transformed it for that community. What do you all want to see there? This is what this meeting is about tonight. Then we can take it back and see what it means for us to do what you asked us to do. If it's not, then we come back and say, we can't do that, but give us more ideas. If we need more than one idea, if we need more than two ideas, we need several ideas so our staff can come together and make some recommendations. That's why we're here.
You got to wait until she call you. Wait a minute. You got to wait until she call you. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I'll say one thing. All, see, I, I moved in here in 2000 and I bought a house down this way. I thought it was a good community to move into. And about five years ago, I painted my house off. Yes, if y'all move in that community, do that thing here, my house dropped about $100,000. We won't have taxes, we pay for it now. We still got to pay the high taxes y'all put on us for the land and the house. Last time y'all put the land on us, just for the land, it cost us $600. Now I'm paying $1,700 for the house. I'm paying $1,700 for property insurance. I bought my house, I worked hard for my, some people get a struggle for that house. They paid for that house hard and sweat. If you, if you put no people in there, I'm a truck driver, man. I make $170,000 a year for the last 18 years. Some people got two people in the house, we got a whole community in the house, whole family members in the house, sweat for that money. If you put them in there, man, what they going to live on, man? People come in there, people come in there and rob them early at night, early in the morning, anytime of night with their safe phone. That's their pride, man. Boy, when they got that house, you know? You can't deal with that. You can't understand that. That's their sweat. That's their heartacheing. And that's their money. That's their livelihood when they got that house, when they pay for it. Ain't nobody, ain't nobody in the world but God. And if you got God on your side, man, you don't let nobody come in your neighborhood and come rob you. You will knock them down.
Thank you.
That's all I got to say.
Since we have already moved to public comments, we're still asking you to keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the executive committee of High Point NAACP, good evening, Dr. Lynn Hairston. Since this is a listening session, I want to offer several options that we need to look at collectively. All of us know that, and I know the fact that, let's reimagine what the entirety of High Point needs to look like between now and the year 2045. We know that High Point needs a full-fledged revitalization plan. Yes, we're talking about one particular entity. Well, we need to revitalize this city from the Presbyterian home to affordable housing, from storefront changes in the mall and the strip malls, the homes down Lexington Avenue that leads into High Point University. My suggestion is that we seek public and private funds to be able to really revitalize Five Points in its entirety, not just one area. That, for everyone who lives in that area, so that the economic viability can foster job training, can foster homes and all of those kinds of things that's going to sustain the lives of our community between now and the year 2025.
I like what the lady shared right there. What I'm hearing is a lot of either confidence or the comrades. And what that means is oftentimes people have one thing in common and that's what they're against. And sometimes they have one thing in common and that's what they're for. But what I'm understanding, this is for a solution, like we die, we perish because of lack of vision. Before we can get where she's talking about, I really like that is we got to come up with some type of infrastructure, some type of unity, so we can vision something that looks something like that. So we quit settling for one building at a time. It's the place that y'all talking about, it's the Presbyterian home, it's that, the grocery store. And we can't just be shining out every homeless person, because every homeless person ain't bad. Sometimes we fall hard, huh?
All right, yeah.
So a part of the infrastructure could be to employ these people during the daytime, give them something to do, like rebuild the community. And what happens when a person is a felon sometime, what you do is you get more work out of them, because now they understand the value of respect and rebuilding, right? So instead of just casting out everything, and I'm not, for everybody saying that, I'm not saying put a homeless shelter in. I was here when they tried to put a prison up there. That's not going to happen either. What we're trying to talk about is an infrastructure where we can rebuild and reshape this place. Now, when we're talking about the homeless people and casting them out, are we going to get out there and go build it? Are we going to go out there and rebuild? We got people that can volunteer. Doesn't mean you got the mood in there. That's just an idea, but it's an idea about a solution instead of where we don't work. Brother Ray, I already said, they're not quit bringing a homeless shelter in. So now what are we going to visualize? What are we going to put there? What does it look like next? What's next? One building at a time? Okay, we had a little small win because the shelter income, but we still don't have it down? Well, we have an opportunity right now to present a vision. So we need to develop some type of infrastructures and get something that's worth having for not just this year, but years going forward.
Agreed.
Thank you. My name is William Tucker and I do live in this area, in the Five Points area. I've had a home there, I've had it for about 30 years. I came tonight to propose three things for that area. A memory care facility, because we don't have one and we are, need a one. A grocery store has already been mentioned, and a youth center. Some care for our community.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for coming out here. I didn't expect the turnout to be so intense. For Miss Sandra, Vivian, we love you guys. I just bought a house in Five Points over in Seadrill about three years ago. Before then, I lived in Williams Grove right off of Deep River Road. I sold my house in Williams Grove, you know, at a vet with one dream, and that was to bring the passion that I have in renovating houses into Five Points. And you know why? Because Five Points always brought to me a little taste of home, a little taste of Fort Rainbow, a little taste of New York, where kids can walk to the corner store. I see those kids walking to the corner store. I myself walk on my knees to the corner store. That's something that you don't even see anymore. You know, that freedom of being able to see your neighbors, know your neighbors. I know my neighbors, something that I didn't have at Williams Grove. Five Points is special. And I know that a lot of people say that we have to get better and we have to renovate. I've seen it. I've only been there for three years and I've seen the houses being fixed. I've seen the love being poured into them. My house is one of them. I've got a 100-year-old bungalow, brick, beautiful, that was abandoned for almost six years. My house is one of them. I've got a hundred-year-old bungalow, brick, beautiful, that was abandoned for almost six years. Water damage, termites, you name it. But with that love, I have been able to fix that house. And with the passion that I have for Five Points, I hope that more families do it and fix that houses. They have so much love in them. And Five Points deserves that. We are an amazing community and it shows today. Thank you again for coming.
Uh, my name is Jim McQuaid. And I heard what Skip said. He said, "What do we want to see in our community?" I lived in the, uh, Wilkshaus subdivision adjacent to Five Points. I've been here for almost forty years. I've seen the good, the bad, the ugly. We've been through a scenario with street walkers, homeless people at one time. Lowering our property value, breaking into our homes and breaking in our cars, stealing out our elders. What we would like to see in that area is something that's gonna be a positive impact on the community. Help our community to grow, it's starting to flourish again. Uh, businesses starting to, you know, open up in the Five Points area, like Autozone just opened up a new store there. And, uh, the tire store opened up, but the area is flourishing. Families are buying homes down in my subdivision now. Uh, not only blacks, whites, Hispanics, Asians, it's a nice diverse neighborhood. But bringing in an atmosphere that the shelter provides, don't bring nothing but negative atmosphere in there. And it's something we, it's something we can't live with again. And just like the echo what the young lady just said. We have children walking their dogs in the afternoon through the neighborhood. Uh, older people walking in the afternoons, jogging and stuff. We got the Greenway adjacent to, uh, the Five Points area. So we want to keep it fairly clean. We have enough with panhammers and the few orders that we have. But we have been through this before. We don't wanna go through this again.
My name is David Day. I'm a homeowner in the Five Points neighborhood. Um, I appreciate everybody coming out. We passed out so many flyers and we really appreciate everyone coming out. Um, let's be clear, we are not against the homeless. We understand the need for services, but we strongly oppose placing a massive homeless compound, um, the sheltered residential housing in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Again, this will be in my backyard on the other side of my privacy, please. Okay? Um, the homeless population has been a longstanding issue in the community that has gone from Five Points. Seems to be the target because of property owned by the county. A facility of this size will overwhelm us. And let me point this out, people who don't live in Five Points may have different opinions, but that's because they don't live with the day-to-day results of a homeless compound being placed in their neighborhood. We are the ones who will carry the burden and our voices must matter most in this decision. This project will have a great effect on businesses. Local businesses already here will struggle with the consequences of a large homeless compound nearby. What do we want instead? We want investments that lift families up, not parks that tear them down. We want parks, youth programs, recreation centers, and small businesses that encourage growth. We want services and housing for our seniors who have given so much to this community. We want safety and stability and development that benefits families who live here. We believe nonprofit facilities of this size should be placed in locations properly equipped to support them, rather than an established residential neighborhood like Five Points. We have a food base and we don't have a grocery store. Other neighborhoods have already said no. Brentwood Street said no. East Lexington Avenue said no. And so now Five Points is saying no. And we're saying no for the same reasons that they were. When they said no, they moved right along. We're asking them to do the same. Five Points does not want it here. We're asking that they move along. Um, at the end, I'm gonna say, we're not against the homeless. We are for our neighborhood. And for our neighborhood, the answer is no. Thank you.
I just wanna ask you one quick question. I know a lot of us didn't come out here and ask to tell and talk about what our vision was, because we all thought it was kind of nice or something else. But I did hear you say that y'all had three or four proposals already on the table. And so we're gonna start from scratch, nine channels with them three or four proposals though.
There is a proposal for some affordable housing, um, to go there. And a proposal for some, uh, a cluster of nonprofits to be out there under one roof.
Nonprofits, you have various things.
That means that somebody has submitted a proposal, uh, wanting to put, uh, different nonprofits out there to make it a one-stop shop. If you need, uh, it's a proposal. It's a proposal. To put more than one, if you're looking for housing, if you're looking for financial assistance, if you're looking for different things and wanna put a compound that has all of these different nonprofit organizations. So you could go there, just go from one to the other. If you're looking to cover whatever need you have. Those are some of the proposals that we have, that we have received. We haven't made any decisions. People can submit as many proposals if they want to the county. Again, we're listening to you before we make any decisions.
I live in the Five Points area fifty-two years, so I'm not working as a resident. But let me tell you, the lady that just spoke, Ms. Paday, she has been to every Five Points neighborhood meeting since we tried to organize a year ago. I've missed a couple, there was some physical activity. But we, mostly we've had is maybe five, six people. Look at the turnout tonight. I wish everybody would show up. Now, boys, this loud carried a whole lot of other than one or two. Except for you, Ms. Paul Brown. Now, later, she came to the attorney and said, "Talk to my husband." Now, how should people right here get a court of attorney? I called the elected one later to represent us. And it was talking about the line over Greensboro. Why not do something for our youth here in High Point, in the Five Points area? They have nothing, you know, my thing is driving hungry. I've been driving two years old. So I'm saying, we need more people coming to our Five Points meeting.
You know, they have five points.
I could tell you when we walked the grounds, Commissioner Austin and I, and we went into the lifespan building, the first thing that he said was, "We could put a gym in this building."
Maybe we need some.
Hey, my name is Ross Spencer.
Oh, there's a beer.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Um, to reiterate one or two things that the board has said, yes, this is a food desert. We've got several, several grocery stores in the area. I remember food line. And the safety line, yes, it's a food desert. I'm the guy that's everywhere. There do need a grocery store in the area, one that obviously is for our people also. The other thing is, is some healthcare.
Lexington Avenue and Jameson.
We got one.
That has youth health care, primary care facility, a hospital with a good urgent care, a good urgent care, a good primary care office. This area deserves a good health facility.
My name is Mr. Ross Spencer Jr., and I've been proud business owner in the High, Five Points area now for over twenty-five years. Um, I feel like the common denominator here is the shelter. And I'm not necessarily saying, "Let's disregard the homeless." But if the common denominator is the shelter, which is housing over two hundred and sixty, like everybody all agrees here, this shouldn't be the area and this shouldn't be the spot. But I do have a couple of recommendations in regards to the shelter. So I suggest spreading out shelters among smaller sizes, rather than two hundred and sixty beds just dumping in, uh, our community. Or also, parent shelters with robust services such as mental health, addiction support, job training, substance abuse treatment, and case management. Just being up there for over twenty-five years, I've seen all walks of life when it comes to the homeless. And I've seen the toll that the drugs take on, I've seen the toll that the mental health crisis takes on. And I see how the small number of people can affect this community, let alone, uh, housing two hundred and sixty over the community. And I understand that we've all come to a common denominator now that the homeless shelters shouldn't be there. But that's my recommendation, spreading out smaller facilities throughout the city, rather than just dumping one large facility in our community.
I'm not gonna interject here because the homeless population keeps coming up. What I wanna share is that we have a Gilbert County Homeless Task Force. It is composed of three tri-chairs. Commissioner Austin is a tri-chair. The mayor, Cyril Johnson, is a tri-chair representing High Point. Mayor Nancy Vaughn is the other tri-chair representing Greensboro. We meet monthly, I'm a part of that committee as well. We meet monthly to come up with solutions for the homeless population in Gilbert County. So we, we realize that that is a concern, but we hear you loud and clear. The homeless task force has nothing to do with open door ministries. I'm just bringing that into your view to know that we are addressing homelessness in Gilbert County. And we hear you loud and clear that you do not want a homeless shelter in the Five Points area.
Uh, good evening. My name is Joseph Austin. I moved to High Point about forty-five years ago. I stayed in various houses around the city. Uh, I understand that, because I did it too, thank goodness me, because the rumor was flowing about the homeless shelter. And there is a homeless crisis. But as far as that twenty-one acre, um, parcel. I don't know how many people in here have looked at the Windsor Center area in Greensboro. Um, that's going to be a really nice complex to house, uh, programs for youth, uh, the gym, and, uh, the library and, and other, uh, entities in that facility. But I'd also encourage people to look at High Point's twenty-fourty-five for the city. Uh, what I envision in this area is a lot of mixed-use, um, facilities. Uh, you know, we do have a food desert here, uh, grocery store would be great. We do have a medical desert here, medical facility would be great. Uh, we do have nonprofit entities that are doing their jobs. And they need a facility also. So I would encourage folks to kinda look at that Windsor Center complex and, uh, and you can make suggestions up until they make a decision, so do, do take a look at it.
And I will say that the county provided some funding for that center as well.
Uh, good evening. I'm Hannah Leach. Um, this is my hometown. I hear all suggestions that were made, and you talk about affordable housing. I would stress that you're not bringing any tight houses. They're crowded, they're, uh, unattractive, and everything else. And also, um, not those high rises. You're building these apartments that are four, four tiers high and crowded people in this long space. Affordable housing should be like the houses that are over here on Hammond Street, over here on Runyon. Look the same as the community does. And, uh, you talk about the grocery store. We try and keep grocery, food at grocery store on Kent Drive. It got subsidies from the community. They will not stay. If you bring a grocery store to the community, can't forget the commitment of maybe another fifteen years, maybe the name stays, is a possibility.
Hi, hey, everybody. My name is Ruben Robinson. I'm born and raised here in High Point, Delaware. I lived in the Five Point area all my life, almost. Uh, my grandmother, um, Audrey Ashberry, she worked at the Presbyterian home right across from the, the place that y'all talking about. What I propose for this area, I've raised several kids in this area. Uh, I propose a Y O C A, a, uh, Boys and Girls Club or Salvation Army. Those facilities have gyms inside as well as meeting rooms, as well as, um, several different things that our elders and our young people are able to benefit from. So those, so, so for that area, I propose like a Y O C A or, uh, Boys and Girls Club, Salvation Army. Anything that benefits the whole community as a whole, not only our youth, but our, but our old, our elder people as well.
I'm not very new to High Point in eighty-four. And we, in fact, when we did, we paid our own also. But I'm just wondering, uh, I used to work at Evergreen nursing home. And I was just thinking, uh, about making another nursing home or making a mall for the children. Because the, uh, university got the children mall and they ain't got nowhere, really nowhere to go. So they need another mall on this side for the children.
Not the children.
And I also said this year, if, uh, how can we have the homeless running around? Uh, 'cause at the store, sometimes I go to the store, people getting afraid even come up and go in the store. But when the police come, they don't do nothing. And then, and they ain't helping the people. So how do I add, uh, the homeless that we already got with other ones that running around, not doing right? So we ain't playing that a bit.
Please, pretty young man. Brother Skip, I remember this when I came into High Point. Almost raised.
Almost raised.
Hope you have this church. I choose all the school here. Pay taxes, I'm too big to buy in this town. And we have died now till we feel that we don't have anything to say in the world, 'cause our bankroll and big drop. And the bankroll children were deep in the circle. It's not one of God. Now, I can understand the homeless needs a well-protected. A longer wiki pattern on the back, they would stay homeless. How many of us know people that own a plant will hide the homeless? They're running a dollar so they can kill something to stay. But see what they say now, that God bless this neighborhood. They come from paint, they pockets over on the south side of town, this part of that. My son Robert working with my senior, use a paintbrush every day. Look what God got him now.
That's right.
Not because we were trying to be who he really was. We come from a poor family. But because God has saved the dead, can we was fall. Thank you, brother. Don't fight that. Don't fight that. Let's not, let's don't fight it. Let's try to come up with a solution, guys, like, well, through all this old ground. Why don't we take talk to the city about buying some ground somewhere and build a place to put the homeless? If you don't mind, yes, we have to pay taxes this city since nineteen eighty-five. If you don't have enough, you don't pay taxes in the city since nineteen eighty-five. Have you made taxes in this city? So did you own part of High Point? All this tax you're paying.
Thank you.
Don't have no worryin', we got to say, honey, I know our town on it. You can be a taxpayer, it's really greedy. You can put the homeless boy out. That thing to do is talk to some veterans, hide these homeless boys, get them out the street, and stop worrying about throwing them out on the roads. That's what I'm saying.
That's a good, that's good.
As he stated, he knew me when I wasn't who I am now. In nineteen eighty-one, I was the first residence manager of Spring Valley Apartments. And you can think back to nineteen eighty-one, I was twenty-three years old at the time. And when I took that job, they sent me over there. They had cats, rats, the biggest cats running through the parking lot. And in the midday, daytime, you had drug houses over there, you had liquor houses over there. I did work over there for a year and a half, okay? And we cleaned it up as much as possible. And some of you might be in here that played on my baseball team, the Spring Valley Tigers. That we had in our backseat, and we won the championship that year. Okay, so I have the passion of High Point in my heart, because this is where I started from, okay? Been there, done there, okay? So we know, I know where we are, and I know where we want to go. That's why I'll make this suggestion. Let me ask that, number one, you all consider forming a committee, okay? It's the thing, it'd be great, believe it. Okay, you all get together, just like we did in Greensboro. We bought the urban school over there, was it eight acres? Eight acres of land. We formed, and they formed a committee in the community. Been leading for about a year and a half or so, okay? On what they wanted to see in that eight acres, okay? And we, the county committed to them, just like we committed to you all. We're not gonna build anything until we hear back from the community. We staffed it. Our staff comes in here, she staffed it, okay? And we have one of our employees at every one of their meetings. So we can hear what they have to say, and she brings it back to the commissions. Form a committee, okay? All of you don't have to be there, form a committee and just feed your information to that committee. The committee goes out and talks to the community, they have their community committees, and then comes back with some ideas for the county to be able to consider, okay? We're serious. This is not our first rodeo. We did that with the urban school when we tore that building down, okay? And we said, we're not gonna build that thing back until you decide that's what you want to do. And I said to the county commissioners, okay? I don't want us to propose nothing to the community, because we want to get from here to then. I don't want to propose nothing to them and say, we're gonna do this, this is the way it's gonna be, this is what it's gonna be, and you don't have to say so about it, this is what the county's gonna do. But at the same time, which has already been said, just like we did in Greensboro, the city of High Point need to come to the table also. This should be a joint effort. This should be a joint effort between the county and the city of High Point. Put it together, not just High Point. Have a meeting with them too, and let them know what you want. They should call a meeting also to hear what you want. But that committee that we formed over in Greensboro consists of Greensboro City Council members, county commissioners, and our staff from the city of Greensboro and from the county. The same idea can happen right here, okay? You all make the decision as a community. Hash it out, go to the community meetings, then make some proposals. You don't have to be in two months from now, three months from now. Whenever you all get ready, that's twenty-one acres of land that's been sitting there for years. Great, good place, okay? We can do something transformative for that community if we think together as a community. And what, see what the community wants. You all bring it back to the city of Greensboro, the city of High Point, and the county. This is what we'd like to have. Give it to us. We're taxpayers. And we don't have to, we don't have to tell y'all what we're gonna do to you all, you all as our community. Y'all tell us what you want us to do in the community. We're elected officials, okay? You all are on us, you all elect us. Y'all tell us what to do, okay? We don't tell you what we're going to do without your permission. Well, again, one person doesn't make their ticket to be on the county's commission, I don't make the decisions for the county. It's not to be High Point. Five votes for the county commission to choose, okay? A majority on the city county, if one person says something, that don't make it so, okay? I have to get five votes from everybody, I mean, on everything that I do, or propose. It's not automatically gonna happen just because I'm the chairman, no. I'm one vote, okay? But I have to make sure I get the other five here from the other commissioners. That's why you have Mr. Brendan Gray here. He represents our government, he hear you. He's your representative, you know Carvina, you know she's a fighter. Whatever Carvina wants in High Point, Clark, it's all there again.
And I got three votes sitting right here, three votes right here.
And that's who I take my lead from when it comes to High Point. Because she, to me, she's High Point's queen, okay? And she fights for High Point on that board. And don't stop fighting until she get what she want. And I'm always by her side.
Good evening, everybody. So grateful for you all to provide this space. I think it's very important for us to be able to come together in these spaces. I'm also very aware that there was a time where we didn't have these opportunities. My name is Attorney Brendan Edgbert, and I grew up here in this area that we call Five Points. I have to bear with me, I have to read off my phone because I'll have to die. And, you know, like they say, it takes a village to raise a child. But here's something I learned from my short-term years in this earth. And it takes those, it takes those children, when they grow up, to build that village even stronger. So I agree with the sentiments that this congregation has been putting forth. And you can kind of reiterate little pieces of some of them. But I think Five Points needs investment. Investment that helps us raise our children and strengthen our community as a whole. So let me take a second here just to kind of paint a picture of what that village may have the opportunity to look like. So one, I propose a small business incubator center. So we can turn this space that we have in High Point. We can turn this space into High Point's Muslim Brotherhood. This supports local minority-owned businesses with affordable office space, mentorship, and the resources. This creates jobs for our residents, it brings customers to existing businesses, and it builds wealth in our community instead of managing the sort of problems that we already been kind of speaking to. Another thing I would propose is a skills training and workforce development center. We could program with Gilbert Tech. And local employers to train our residents for high-demand, for high-demand jobs in manufacturing, in healthcare, in technology. You know, artificial intelligence is becoming the thing of this era. This type of unemployment adds source and it gives our people a pathway to success right here in High Point.
You've been standing up a long time.
And then I think that it's also important, because as I mentioned before, I said village, but I think it's all about the community and the people that we have in this community. So I also like to propose just a couple of community fashion options of focus as well. I've heard that you talk about rights, gays, and youth centers. And so I also propose a community recreation center. It gives our kids and our seniors a safe, positive place to go. Up to school programs, senior activities, community meetings such as this one, and sports facilities that brings neighbors together. This builds community strength, and it gives families reasons to stay and invest in it. I also heard about mixed-use development. I want to reiterate that point as well. We bring life back to Five Points. With retail on the ground floor and apartments for working families above. This generates tax revenue, creates flood traffic for businesses, and provides housing for people to contribute to the community, not drain resources. Can I make one more comment?
Because we, we're not always saying.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Bishop for Quick. And I am fully invested in this community. I've been living around this area all my life. I remember Five Points, it used to be that Chinese restaurant a long time ago, right beside McDonald's. Matter of fact, my bike got stolen in Five Points. So I am fully invested in Five Points. But I would like to suggest a solution. I think that we can, we can give a man a fish, or we can teach him how to fish. And the proposal I have is called K T A, Kingdom Transformation Academy. In other words, we train individuals for two years straight. And we give them the skills, the technology that they need, so that they can advance their life. Too many times, we give people a hand down, not a hand up. And so what we need to do is invest in people, not invest in facilities. The facilities are gonna come, but we need to invest in people. We need to give people the skills that they need so that they can stop being homeless. Because if we don't give them the skills that they need, then we're just gonna keep dealing with the homelessness. But what if we actually trained them for two years straight, gave them the education that they needed, gave them the skills, and give them the word of God, because you can't do nothing without God? And during those two years, we, they built the homes that they're gonna live in during the two years. Now they have sweat equity into their own homes. And they're gonna take care of their own stuff because they built it. But I think there's a problem that, you know, I'm just like this. It's hard for anybody to really understand the value of something, especially when you don't live there. People who are gonna work at this center, wherever it's gonna be, they're gonna go home. We're gonna be living here. And so we're gonna have to deal, and my, the issue is, is that there's enough issues and problems going on in Centennial right now. Now you wanna bring in. Now we got over two-hundred and something else problems that we gotta deal with as well. And so I am for every person building their life, giving their life back on track. But there's a proper way that we gotta do. I have a minister or pastor who lives in this community over here, very close to it. And let me say this, if you live, if you drive from your home and it takes you less than three minutes to get there, you are fully invested in this project. Because everything's gonna fall right to your backyard. And so what we gotta do is, we gotta understand.
Thank you, Pastor Quay.